Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the November 4th, 2021 regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. I ask you please stand now as we observe a brief moment of silence. We have some special representatives with us from our schools on this evening. I'll now turn this over to Dr. Bracy.
Thank you Chair Patillo, and first good evening to everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, alright. I know you're all happy to be here, but we're happy to see you here this evening. So tonight, we get a chance to start a program that we've had in place for numerous years, but through the pandemic, this was suspended when we didn't have in-person meetings, but now that we're back, we're pleased to have our students come back and highlight their skills in front of us. So with that, for the pledge of allegiance, I would like to call Callie Blunt and Tori Winston to the podium. And they are from Craddock Elementary School, and they will be accompanied by Ms. Jolly Foster, their principal. And you all, come right over there. Okay, now before you begin, let me share some important information so everyone else will know who you all are. So Callie and Tori are kindergarten students at Craddock Elementary School. They both attended Mount Herman Preschool Center last year. They enjoy playing T-ball, soccer, and hanging out with their siblings. Callie's favorite subject is math, because she loves learning with candy and Play-Doh. Tori loves all things related to art. She also loves rhyming words, even though their first career choices are to be teachers like their moms. Well, let me read that again. Even though their first career choices are to be teachers like their moms, they both have backup plans. Callie aspires to be a doctor, and Tori has aspirations to become a rapper. Alright. Alright. So, before they begin, I would like to have Callie's parents, if you're present tonight, will you please stand and be recognized? And Tori, if your parents are here, will they stand and be recognized at this time? Grandma, grandmother's here, thank you for coming. Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to you, young ladies, for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Wisconsin, one nation, undivine, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
If your parents want to come up and take a picture with the girls, if they can.
Yeah. Ms. Jolly Foster, if you would just have them wait there, because we're going to present something after we do the statement. Get that picture for them, please. Alright, thank you. Now, the girls, if you all would stay up here. Yeah. Next, we'll have the school statement, and that's by Ian Boone Jr. Ian, will you please come forward?
Alright.
Alright, so before you begin, let me share a little background information on you. Ian is a sixth grade honor student at Craddock Elementary School. He is the son of Ian Senior and Irene Boone. He loves art, reading, and gaming, and God. He loves serving in the Usher's ministry at his church. Ian's favorite subject is science. Ian enjoys being a part of Craddock Elementary Junior Beta Club. He wants to be a science teacher and a pastor when he grows up. He hopes to follow in his big sister Tanaya's footsteps and attend Virginia State University, who was a senior and former school board representative in 2019. Ian lives by two things, a Martin Luther King Jr. quote that says, "Faith is taking the first step even when you don't see the whole staircase," and a verse in Ephesians that says, "Let no corrupt communication proceed out of your mouth." He believes we all have a responsibility to at least try and be mindful of what we say. Alright. Okay, so Ian, now if your parents are here, will they please stand? Thank you all for coming. Tonight, Dr. Patillo is going to recognize you specially later. You got your own cameo.
Good evening Chairman Patillo, School Board members, Dr. Bracy, and Portsmouth Public Schools family. My name is Ian Boone Jr. and honor student at Craddock Elementary School. I bring to you greetings from the Eagle Nation, our principal, Ms. Lakeisha Jolly Foster. I would like to briefly tell you about all the wonderful things that are happening at Craddock Elementary School. We are a fully accredited school based on the Virginia Department Education Accreditation Standards. Most recently, we had a rededication ceremony where Eagle Nation officially transitioned from James Hurst Elementary School to Craddock Elementary. During that celebration, Mrs. Jolly Foster recognized sixteen employees with at least fifteen years of service to James Hurst. Craddock Elementary is also an Elizabeth River Project Resilient River Star School for the 2021-21 school year. Craddock Elementary has the only elementary chapter of the National Junior Beta Club School. Our school was chosen by, was chosen as a school of merit and a school of distinction by the National Junior Beta Club. We are very proud of our partners in education that include the Portsmouth Sheriff's Department, product civically, and vets, lost and media, and PTA, just to name a few. Over the last two years, we've increased participation of students, parents, staff, and community in school-sponsored events. Just last week, we welcomed over a hundred families at our second annual Title I Fall Festival. We also celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month with our outdoor Hispanic culture walkthrough and with a great turnout of students, parents, and staff. One of my favorite events is our PBIS pop-up parties. We never know when Mrs. Jolly Foster and the PBIS team are going to surprise us with a pop-up party to celebrate our success with positive behavior or regular attendance. Last but not least, our biggest asset at Craddock Elementary is our dedicated staff, the teachers, instructional support staff, office staff, cafeteria, and custodial team. We cannot get this year without all of them. I appreciate the opportunity to share just a snapshot of some of the great things that are happening in my school. Ms. Nolasco will be sharing a video that gives you a sneak peek into Eagle Nation. We invite you to come to Craddock Elementary School to experience Eagle Nation in person. You won't want to leave. I'd like to end with our PBIS Eagle Swag pledge and our school motto. I source safely in everything I do. I work together respectfully. I accept responsibility for my actions. I allow my teachers to guide me towards excellence. Eagle swag is what I do. I am Ian Boone Jr., a proud student of Craddock Elementary School, where our motto is, "One team, one mission, excellence." Thank you for this opportunity to share.
So Ian, so don't leave your, Mrs. Thomas, our board member, has something for you all. And I know we got to get pictures. Mom, do you want to, after he gets his gift, you all can come and get your picture as well.
So, I just want to say, great job, first of all. My future science teacher, pastor, artist, rapper, teacher too, like, can we give them another hand of applause? And continue to represent, be the leader you are. I just got goosebumps listening to you. I know that was not easy, but you did such a great, great job. So proud of you, and this is just something small for you, just to say thank you for stepping up into doing that. That's amazing, so thank you. Great job to perform. So keep doing what you're doing, and you can't wait to see everything and all the dreams you're going to accomplish.
Don't let them sit down.
I'll sit down. And, boots, look, let's talk about the boots. Tori, Callie, y'all did amazing. Like, that's amazing, y'all in kindergarten. That's amazing, so I just want to say thank you, and this is yours, and this is yours. I can't wait to hear one of y'all's songs on the radio, right? And see one of your paintings, and to teach our future students, okay? And thank you so much too, so just great job all around.
Alright, Dr. Foster, thank you again for coming. Do you have any staff here with you?
Uh, Ms. Blunt?
Thank you so much. I thoroughly enjoyed that we have two future teachers and, oh, three future teachers, a pastor, a doctor, MC Tori Rain. I can't wait to see the great things you all do in the future, and you all are truly the pride of Portsmouth, and you make us shine even brighter every single day. Thank you, parents, and thank you, students, again for coming on this evening. Well, now I have agenda item 4.6, which is attendance. Did I skip something?
4.5.
Oh, I'm sorry, 4.5, mission statement, I missed Thomas.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.6, attendance, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Here.
Mrs. Schumake?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Dr. Patillo?
Here.
Seven members present, one member absent.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.7, consideration of the agenda for November 4th, 2021, I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Schumake, second by Vice Chair Atkinson, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Before we move to the next agenda item, I did want to pause for a moment. You know, we did have an election on Tuesday, and I did want to recognize our newly elected school board member who's present with us here tonight, Dr. Melvin Cotton, if you could stand. Dr. Cotton will be getting sworn in on next week, and he'll be ready to start fresh and ready to roll after that, so thank you and welcome aboard. I also wanted to recognize our former student representative. She's been away from us for almost three whole years, about three whole years, but she's already a senior in college already, so that's dual enrollment at its finest. So I want to recognize Ms. Tanaya Bellamy, who's on tonight. Stand up, take a seat where you are. She's at Selden High School, she's at Selden College, and she'll be graduating in May, just after three years, so I'm extremely proud of her, but she's a prime example of what the dual enrollment program in Portsmouth can do for our students. You leave here with college credits, and as long as you stay focused, and you go to college, and you do your thing, you graduate early in three years, and I'm so proud of her. Let's give her another hand. Alright, agenda item 5.1 is public comment, non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir, we have two.
Alright.
As part of the school division's dedication to full transparency and collaboration and decision-making, the School Board of the City of Portsmouth allocates time for public comment at every regular meeting of the month to hear directly from citizens on matters of public concern regarding Portsmouth Public Schools. If you wish to address the School Board, you must register with the Clerk of the Board ahead of the scheduled meeting start time. During public comment, each speaker will have five minutes to share their comments with board members. Speakers are not allowed to yield their time to another speaker, and they are not to make any formal resolutions, declarations, or proclamations as part of their comments. Speakers are reminded to maintain decorum and respect while addressing the Board. Specifically, no individual personnel, student, or family should be named in comments, as speakers are at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the School Board, the superintendent, nor school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers. A written copy of speaker's comments can be left with the Clerk of the Board, and any matter requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent and school administration to address as needed. As the Board opens to public comment, the audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers.
Good evening, Dr. Patillo, our Chair, our Vice Chair, my other half, and all the School Board members at large. Dr. Bracy, good to see you, and Dr. Cotton, thank you and welcome. I look forward to working with you and working you, sir, in the community. I'm here tonight, have some good news, actually. I'm hopeful that Dr. Bracy and Dr. Patillo will engage the Parks and Rec Department. I serve as the Vice Chair of the Parks and Rec Department, and you guys may be aware that City Council has allocated $1.5 million to go into Parks and Rec. Spoke with the Director, Mr. Palmacheck, Mark Palmacheck, and he, we have a lot of positions available, and I told him that it would be a good thing if we start with the School Division and give the staff there an opportunity to apply, because we have so many talented persons working in the School Division. And what we're trying to do is to curb gun violence in our community and to help these young people, and I know that's the vision of PPS, to do the same. We have various classes, we have gardening, we have art class, we have boxing class, we need a boxing coach, and to be honest with you guys, you can email me, my email, am I allowed to give that? Yeah, Barry, B-A-R-R-Y dot Randall at portsk12, or you can call Mr. Palmacheck at 757-393-8481, because I'm looking forward to creating some programs that we may not have even put in place. I heard the young lady said she want to be a rapper, and I'm looking forward, I'm going to ask the Board if we would go over to Newport News so that we can see the studios that their community rec center put in for persons in the community to be able to come in and record their rap songs. So I'm going to ask Mr. Palmacheck to look into that so that we can do something similar here in Portsmouth. So with our gifted and talented program, and our art teachers, and our band directors, and our choreographers, and so many other things, I even want to see a home ec class offered through the city. So it's money there. Ms. Angel Jones, our City Manager, even though we all know that the core of who we are as a people is volunteer, but she wanted to make sure, as well as City Council, that people are compensated for their time. So all teachers, staff, we even need bus drivers, and thank you, Dr. Bracy, because you guys have already opened up some of the schools to serve as sites for these things that we're trying to do, so we're going to be trying to get in more of the schools, and he said at our last meeting that we need bus drivers, so that's other opportunities in the evening, of course, and these just little part-time positions, but you get the joy of being able to help these young people thrive and go forward. So, Dr. Patillo, I'm hopeful that you would, you know, follow up with Mr. Palmacheck and see what we can do to really get some great programs going in the city. I want to see some dance steppers, some, the karate, the box, I really want to make sure that the boxing program takes off, and the rap and choreography, and then being that we already have the STEM programs and stuff, I would like to see that offered in the city as well. So it would be a good thing if PPS could kind of take the charge and help us over in Parks and Rec. So I look forward to you guys reaching out to me for additional information, and I can't stay around, I have some children waiting for me at Norcom, so thank you guys for taking this time to listen to me. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank the Board members for allowing me the opportunity to come before you at this time, because of the important concern about our salaries. I've been here since 1986, and I have seen a lot of changes through the years, and a lot of the members have changed since I've been down here before. It's been a while. But at this time, there is concern about salary, and even though it's changed, the bus monitors have, at that time, when I started, had no benefits, none at all, but through the time, you guys have made it possible for us to get the insurance. We couldn't even go to the credit union, the credit union became available. We also had retirement, other things were added through the help of the School Board assisting us, but at this time, we, you know, at that time, we were transporting kids from Norfolk, from Portsmouth to Norfolk, behavior kids, I mean, really, really bad behavior kids. Some of them are dead, some are in jail, even now. But my concern now is that, back then, I used to ask for combat pay, but right now, I'm asking for assistance with, all of us, right, at this time, are dealing with the pandemic. We have kids and parents that are, that we are around that don't play safe, so we feel like that we should have some sort of finances to help us with this situation. What I want to do now is talk about how, like I said, I've been here since 86, how I can go buy a fast food restaurant, and they're going to be getting the same thing I'm getting now, after being, I've been working almost 30 years. That's not fair. Back then, they would have somebody come in and adjust our pay scales, a company, I don't know what the company was at that time, but areas where, that near us were getting more paid than we are. But right now, with the pandemic, we can see how things are rising. When they, when we get a cost of living increase, what goes up? Our insurance, that goes out, dollar, a two, three cent increase. We need more money to help us adjust to the gas, I went to go get gas today, ooh, too much. So we need money to adjust for food, gas, everything is going up, but our salaries. We want to ask you guys, you've helped us before, to help us again with our salaries. And I appreciate what you've done in the past, and I know you can do it again, help us to, with our finances. You have any questions?
I will say, Ms. Brooks, thank you.
Okay.
No, thank you for coming. I truly respect your request, and thank you for how you delivered it, and I appreciate you giving us the written document forward too, to give me something to actually go back over.
And one thing I'd like to say, add it to, I've been used to, all these years, dealing with special needs, or kids with behavior problems, but now I'm dealing with regular little kids, I'm too old for this.
And Ms. Brooks, I also want to say, thank you for being with us since 1986. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
That concludes our list of registered speakers.
Thank you so much. We have no speakers for Board Agenda Items, so I will move on to Agenda Item 6.1, Agenda Item 6, which I consent, Agenda Item 6.1 through 6.5, and I will entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Board Member Hines, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda Item 7.1 is a monthly report from Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Wynn?
Good evening, Dr. Patillo, Chairman, and Vice Chairman Atkinson, members of the Board, and Dr. Bracy. I'm always delighted to give you the Curriculum and Instruction Report. As I always mention, you do have the written report in your Board docs, and tonight, we have a very special treat from our Science Department. I want to first introduce you to Mr. Wesley Bias Saunders. Wesley, if you'll come up, please. Wesley is the son of Geneva Bias and Wesley Saunders of Portsmouth.
Alright.
Wesley's a sophomore at IC Norcom High School. He wants to earn an undergraduate degree in sociology and then attend medical school. His ultimate career goal is to become a surgeon with a specialty in reconstructive surgery.
Alright, money there.
We also have with us one of our staff, teacher, Mr. Jamal Felton, Mr. Felton? Mr. Felton is a sponsor for our high school students who are associated with Health Sciences Career Development Program. He is a science teacher assigned to Manor High School, and also enjoys his coaching duties with the school's girls soccer team. He received his undergraduate degree from Shaw University in Raleigh, and he is pursuing his graduate-level work in the field of curriculum and instruction. Mr. Felton?
Good evening, Dr. Patillo, distinguished guest, and the entire Board. I'm here to present to you an update from the Office of Science about our Health Sciences Career Development Program that we have in conjunction with Eastern Virginia Medical School and some other partners in the area.
Greetings. My name is Jamal Felton. I'm a biology teacher at Manor High School, and I was asked by the Office of Science to give an update on the Health Sciences Career Development Program. The goal of the Health Sciences Career Development Program is to create an in-depth awareness of the wide range of workforce careers in the health sciences. To accomplish this, our vision is to work with community partners who collaborate with us on creating authentic learning experiences. From these learning opportunities where students interact with professionals within their fields of interest, students develop a clearer understanding of workforce standards and expectations. An examination of Hampton Roads regional data demonstrates a real need to offer such a program. The wide-ranging field of health sciences places it at a top employer in the region, competing for quality candidates alongside with our federal and maritime industries. A large part of the health sciences workforce population are needed to staff our region's acute care and specialty hospitals. In addition, with over 5,000 physicians in the region, multiple private practices need support positions. Some of the largest private employers in the region are Centerra, Riverside, Children's Hospitals of the King's Daughters, and Bon Secours. And located enforcement with over 5,000 federal and military health sciences position is the Portsmouth Naval Medical Center. In addition, our region has its own medical school, EVMS, located in Norfolk. Plus, top biotech firms are located in Hampton Roads like Operation Smile and Life Net. Our Health Sciences Career Development Program is driven by community partnerships supporting our goal of building career awareness. Our initial partner, EVMS- Our initial partner, EVMS, works collaboratively with Portsmouth Public Schools to develop hands-on learning experiences to grow career awareness in many fields of health sciences pathways needed to support the level of healthcare we have come to expect. This past year, we entered into an educational partnership agreement with Portsmouth Naval Medical Center to provide shadowing and mentorship for our students so they may feel the real work in action. The Virginia Department of Education also committed to provide $10,000 of funding in support of developing our Health Sciences Career Development Program with standardized patient training. Here, you'll see footage of our summer Health Sciences Academy where students explore topics such as anatomy and biotechnology. We're offering the academies because a lot of students don't understand that there are other careers in health sciences other than just being a physician or just being a medical doctor. It does kind of smell like a frog. The fetal feed dissection was all about our biotechnology and research and development portion of the camp.
Cut open a pig and looked at the different organs that were in there. And we realized that they have just as many organs and the same organs as us.
It's really hands-on and it expands the interest of some people who are interested in lab work who wouldn't necessarily be interested in patient care.
Teaching them about the two different types of tests, one being the ELISA. And then the other test is what they call the gold standard, that's the PCR test. I think that having this experience in high schools, it helps with their science skills, their critical thinking skills, their problem-solving skills, and then helps them really kind of figure out if it's what they want to do or not.
There's so many good experiences and so many people in the medical field to talk to, to see, is this what I'm interested in?
Trying to prepare them at the grassroots as soon as possible so that we can create a new foundation and a new generation of healthcare professionals.
The Health Sciences Career Development Program is meant to add continuous support throughout the student's secondary educational experience. A new cohort is recruited within the incoming freshman class and with a summer bridge program each year, which allows for an in-depth explorations of health sciences career fields. Throughout the program, students are provided with hands-on learning experiences with health sciences professionals along with community-based shadowing and mentoring opportunities in career fields of their interest. By the time the students have moved into their later secondary matriculation, they may have applied for a limited number of paid summer internships within EVMS. An indicator of successful enrichment program is shown by its ability to grow and be recognized for creating more learning opportunities. This is the case of the Health Sciences Career Development Program. Our program has continued on through a pandemic and learned new ways to reach out to our students since its start in 2019. All learning experiences, virtual or in person, associated with our community partnerships are aligned to standards as outlined by the National Curriculum of Health Sciences Education. Because of our strong community partnerships and the ability to monitor and measure student growth and career awareness in critical health sciences career fields in the community, the Virginia School Board Association has recognized the Health Sciences Career Development Program as an excellence in workforce readiness program. Thank you for allowing me to take time to share the success of our program. We'll be happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Good evening. My name is Wesley and this past summer, I engaged in the Eastern Virginia Medical School Health Sciences Summer Academy. Thank you. This camp included various opportunities for me to advance my knowledge in medicine, health sciences and other health sciences, including neuroscience, biology, and anatomy and physiology. This camp has been a great chance for me to learn and aggrandize my knowledge of the medical health field. We participated in fun activities, including suturing, dissecting fetal pigs, simulating PCR tests for COVID-19, various lectures, and more fun activities that would take far too long to name. This camp was a phenomenal opportunity for me to make new friendships, further my knowledge of medicine, and solidify my choice to pursue medicine in the future. Thank you.
No, I actually want to thank Wesley for his participation and for coming to help Mr. Felton present to us on tonight. I actually presented along with Dr. Bracy at a conference about our school division, and we actually featured this video in your program. So I want to tell you that people all across the country are very excited about what we're doing in Portsmouth. You all should be commended for that. So, so thank you again for doing that for us. But before, before you leave, Vice Chair Atkinson and then Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you. Great job, Mr. Felton. This program is amazing. And, and what I wanted to note is there a way you can get with Lauren? And that, that specific video clip that was in this PowerPoint, could we post that on the page to highlight that program? Because that was a great video and I know that video, if it sparked my interest, I'm, I'm not even interested in the medical field. But I was, I was excited to see that and I'm like, wow, our students are really doing that. So if we can get that posted on our social media page, I would love it. And thank you.
Echoing, this is a wonderful program and I think it really needs to be advertised to our parents and students so that they can know more about it. And I'm just curious, Wesley, how did, right here? I mean, and I do that in class all the time, like who's talking? But as a sociologist, I'm glad to hear that you're interested in majoring in sociology. And that is a great major actually for, for medical school. And it's actually one of the things that they test you on, on the MCAT. So good for you. And looking forward to maybe seeing you at ODU. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I was, and I just want to ask one more question from Mr. Felton. Is there anything that we could do as a board to help enhance your program that you can think of? Or if you think of something later, always feel free to, to let us know. I believe we all really being supportive, enhancing that program in any way we possibly can.
I would like to say Wesley did have some concerns. And so I'll get with him and get with the powers that be in the Office of Science, and I'll present to you guys.
Please, please do, please do.
Thank you, thank you.
Science is a big part of medicine. It's the main thing that revolves around. And at Norcom, we don't have an advanced placement biology program or an anatomy and physiology program. And the neighboring schools have it. And I believe it has something to do with the zoning that we have. The student-to-teacher ratio at Norcom isn't great. If you look at Church Linden Wilson, it's compare, it's horrible compared to those schools. And if you look at the zoning, it's, you can see evidently where most students are going, and it's Norcom, you know? And there needs to be change and it needs to happen sooner rather than later. And it's up to the school board to do it.
Thank you so much, Wesley. And we'll ensure that Dr. Bracy and his staff will look into those changes that are needed.
I would just like to say, just to kind of piggyback on what Wesley said. I teach at Manor and I teach AP Biology and Anatomy and Physiology at Manor. So the importance of the students who wanted to go into the biomedical sciences and the medical sciences and health sciences, taking those courses in high school especially, chemistry. You mentioned the MCAT, AP Chemistry, Sociology, those courses are very, very important for them to get at this level in order to have something like this come into fruition. So I just would like to say, what Wesley said, ditto. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all so much. All right, were there any other questions for Dr. Nguyen as far as her report is concerned? Thank you so much. Agenda item 7.2, employee groups budget and salary requests for the 2021-22 school year. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Don Cuffee.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, school board members. My name is Don Cuffee and I'm here representing the Operations Maintenance Department and its staff. I appreciate your time and consideration for the three comments I'll be making this evening. The first comment is for restoring step increases or performance bonuses. Step increases have not been given to operations maintenance staff since 2003. In 2003, both a step increase and a cost of living increase was given to the maintenance staff. But since then, none of these, none of these incentives have been given to our staff. Current operations maintenance staff salaries have not kept up with the local trade salaries. An example of this is that the median, which is the middle, salary of journeyman electrician in the Tidewater area is $58,000. Right now, Portsmouth, the, the salary of a Portsmouth Public School journeyman electrician is $47,000. That's an $11,000 difference and gap, and that's only going to get worse as time goes on. Recruiting of Portsmouth Public School trade workers is getting more difficult. Trades such as plumbers, electricians, and carpenters at the current salaries make it difficult to fill these positions, sometimes taking six months or longer to fill. We have one that, that is continuing to go beyond six months right now. Restoring the step increases and/or providing performance pay bonuses will help reduce the salary gap that exists between operations tradesmen and the trade salaries in the Hampton Roads area. It will also make salaries more competitive for recruiting. My second comment is for hazardous pay. Although operations maintenance staff are designated as essential workers, they have not received hazard pay for working through the COVID-19 pandemic. Operations maintenance staff have been on call and working throughout the COVID pandemic that started in March of 2020. During this time, operations maintenance staff continuously worked at high risk of COVID with no compensation. Our maintenance staff worked approximately a year and a half without hazardous compensation for their high-risk work during the COVID pandemic. In August of 2021, Portsmouth City first responders and essential workers working through the pandemic were given a minimum of $1,500 hazard pay bonus for their work, demonstrating that the same compensation, that some compensation has already been given to essential workers in Portsmouth. No compensation has been provided to our operations maintenance staff for this, for their work to this date. Operations maintenance staff deserve hazard pay compensation for the risks they took and continue to take during the COVID pandemic. My third comment is for establishing an apprentice, apprenticeship program. Within the next year, at least four senior technicians positions will be vacated due to retirement. The loss will cause existing staff shortages to become more severe in the operations maintenance department. Experienced seniors staff with historical and working knowledge of the 25 Portsmouth Public School buildings and their associated utilities, systems, equipment, and layouts will be lost. Losing their experience and their in-house expertise will create knowledge, a knowledge gap that will be difficult to overcome. Unless young technicians and tradesmen are trained by these senior in-house tradesmen, the historic knowledge of the existing utility systems will be lost. A formal apprentice training and mentoring program for the young tradesmen and technicians is urgently needed to sustain and maintain expertise and historic knowledge of Portsmouth Public School's utilities and systems. Hiring tradesmen from outside the Portsmouth Public School system will not substitute for historical knowledge lost by senior staff members retiring. The development of an in-house apprenticeship program will preserve knowledge and skills that can be maintained in-house and into the future. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge the operations maintenance staff that is in attendance here. Would you please stand? Board members, I'd like to thank you for your time, for listening, and your consideration.
Thank you so much, sir.
Ms. Jeanetta Hicks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent, senior staff, school board member, and all guests. My name is Jeanetta Hicks. I'm a head custodian at Victory Elementary. And I'm here to speak for the custodial department on staff shortages, hazard pay, and compensation. Staff shortages continue to put a strain on the custodians. The custodian staff has been shorthanded for a while. In order to make sure that buildings are adequately cleaned and disaffected to receive students and staff, the zone supervisors have to pull custodians from schools to have several custodians and send them to school that don't have enough custodians. This results in overtime on an almost daily basis. We are overworked, stressed, and exhausted. We would like funds allotted in the budget to hire additional custodians at each location so that we can receive much-needed help. Custodians are not compensated enough for the amount of work we do or the risk we take to provide safe and healthy work environments for our students and staff. We would like to request a wage comparison study with the surrounding school districts because we believe we are one of the lowest paid. We are building service, services, essential personnel, and we have had to report to work during inclement weather and the COVID-19 global pandemic, and we have not received any additional compensation, hazard pay or bonuses. Most of the custodian's hourly rate of pay is lower than the hourly rate of the pay of workers from the temp agencies that are hired to help us. We are also concerned with the length of time that it takes to receive step raises. It has also been a long time since we received a bonus. We are hard-working and dependable employees. And even though we appreciate the things that we receive, we deserve and want to be compensated monetarily. Thank you for your time and your consideration. Will all the custodians please stand?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Jody Huff-Stickler.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Bracy and the entire school board team. My name is Jody Huff-Stickler. I am the food service manager at Simonsdale Elementary School. I would like to start off by thanking each of you for the past year and a half of decisions that were based on COVID. Most decisions were difficult and some were, or excuse me, some were not reached in unison. But every decision was thought about diligently and took our staff into consideration. Tonight, I would like to speak on behalf of the food service department. The last 20 months, we were Portsmouth Public Schools' ground-level troops on the COVID battlefield. The rules and protocols were being instated on a trial and error basis as we worked in this pandemic. Our governor closed school on Thursday, March 12, 2020. And food services regrouped. Our governor closed school on Thursday, March 12, 2020, and food services regrouped and started meal services on Tuesday, March 17, 2020. We have serviced our district meals ever since. Our staff not only prepared meals, but also delivered the meals throughout the neighborhoods. This was during the time in which no staff in the district was in the schools except for the operations team. With that being said, I would like to address financial issues with you and inform you of the concerns from myself and my team. First and foremost, you've heard a couple of these already, we need to ensure we are keeping the gap between our new hire pay rate and our veteran employee rate sufficient and fair. We have 22-plus-year employees making around $14 an hour, but the pay scale states employees in food service that have been working 22 years should get hired at more than 15. If we are raising the starting pay rate for new hires, then we should also be looking at our veteran employees' pay and increasing that as well, or we will find that our new hires are getting closer and closer to our employees who have been with PPS for an extended period of time. This will cause our veteran employees, and these are the people that we rely on the most, to become disheartened and frustrated, which will affect our turnover. Secondly, in the Food Service Department, Portsmouth is the lowest-paid food service employees at $10.83 starting wage. Chesapeake is at $11.07, Newport News is at $11.21, Norfolk $11.42, Virginia Beach $11.60, and Suffolk just increased to $11.99, starting at zero years of experience. These numbers are still below the local businesses hiring at $15 and $16 per hour. Our managers are also on the lower end as well. Granted, we have managers that have been in the system for years, but we need to look at our compensation for their hard work and dedication. The next issue I would like to address is food service not receiving holiday pay. For instance, we do not receive any holiday pay for Thanksgiving, spring break, well, Thanksgiving typically, and any other holiday besides Christmas, however, other job classes do. We are thankful for the Christmas pay, but would like things to be kept fair and consistent. During the summer, food service managers and employees receive a change in pay. Our managers are dropped down to $15 an hour, and on most summers, unlike a COVID summer, we receive less hours. It makes it hard to make ends meet. One of the biggest issues I've heard thus far, and the final point that I will touch on, is the bonus hazard pay that was given to other districts, but Portsmouth did not issue any, to any employees. Most cities nearby gave at least one bonus to their employees. Food service has been on the front line since the pandemic began. At one point, we were pretty much the only employees in the building greeting parents and students with a smile and a meal, even though we were unsure and scared for our own health and our own safety. But because that meal may have been the only way that they were going to eat during that time, we continued to persevere. We were on buses taking food out to our neighborhoods, ensuring every child had the opportunity to eat. I know we increased our pay by 6%, but for a $10-an-hour employee working 20 hours per week, this only equals out to 60 cents per hour, which is $12 per week. The entire district is short-staffed, we all know this, and working double at this point, not just food service. A bonus not just to the new hires, but to the employees giving it everything they have right now and doing the job of multiple employees would be a great way to say, "Thank you, you matter, and we are shining brighter during this difficult time." I want to thank each of you for allowing our department to speak up and advocate for ourselves and each other. We appreciate everything you all do and hope that the information that we have given you tonight will bring a new light to decisions you make on the food service side of the budget, along with decisions in every department in our PPS family. We only want fair and equal treatment. This way, we can all shine brighter together. Thank you. I have friends here today, too, that I would like for my cafeteria. There we go.
Thank you. I want to thank you again for coming, and also, Board members, she gave us a wonderful presentation in PowerPoint that displays all the figures she just stated as well for us to look over, but thank you so much again for all that you do. Thank you.
Ms. Paula Gibson.
Good evening. Chair Dr. Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, Superintendent Dr. Bracy, and School Board members. We are here with the permission of Dr. Simmons and Mr. Privet, and this is the consensus of the bus drivers and monitors. I have a PowerPoint. Yes.
Okay, I don't think anyone sent it to IT Force to have it present. We have it on our iPads, but was that okay?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
So the first slide says Portsmouth Public Schools Bus Drivers and Monitors Budget Presentation, November 4, 2021. Thank you. On behalf of the 66 bus drivers and 32 monitors of Portsmouth Public Schools, we would like to thank you for including us in the decision of the upcoming 2022, 2023 school budget, school year budget. Slide three, it says, "Let's meet your bus drivers and monitors. Portsmouth Public Schools Educators on Wheels. Your bus drivers are bold, unique personalities, safety-oriented, dedicated, resilient, invested, valuable, educators on wheels, resourceful, resourceful, student-oriented." This is the acronym for bus drivers. The next slide, "Your bus monitors are magnificent, assistance, organized, needed, invested, time-sensitive, outstanding professionals, resourceful, student/safety oriented." The acronyms for bus monitors. Without this dynamic duo, our students would not arrive safely to school, to their schools, nor arrive back home safely. We come before you tonight to ask for your deliberate investment in the following areas. Compression pay. Pay compression happens when a new employee is paid nearly the same as or more than a longer-service employee in the same role. We do not feel that seasoned drivers' pay should be at the same earning with new inexperienced drivers. The compression pay should reflect the experience, skills, and years they put in. Lateral pay reflects the qualifications and skills we bring to the organization as an employee. With lateral pay as an employee, we pay, with lateral pay, we would be placed in the position on the pay scale that reflects our years and experience. Your deliberate investment on the next slide is comparison pay. In comparison with the different cities, the highest paid is Pecosa at $16.50. Our pay is $13.50, which needs to be competitive with our other cities. Reasonable pay for extra routes. We are asking for extra pay for covering additional routes. Reasonable pay for our monitors raise their pay to a minimum of $13 per hour. Their current pay is $10.83 to start. Referral pay that's higher than the sign-on bonus. The sign-on bonus should be reversed to reflect employee referral equaling $1,000 and new hires $750 instead of vice versa, which is the new hires, if you refer, they were the ones that were getting $1,000, and the ones that, the drivers that were referring were getting the $750. New attire. We would like to be included when other departments receive new attire. Just as you trust us to bring the students to our other educators, which is the best that their parents have to offer, we want to trust that your strong consideration of our requests will make PPS bus drivers and monitors feel wanted, needed, valued, and appreciated. Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing your commitment evaluated to the degree that we can be even more proud as educators on wheels, the bus drivers and monitors of Portsmouth Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the amazing presentation as well, and we all were able to pull that up, and she has the figures within that as well for us to also review. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, and one other thing I do want to say, I know I do appreciate, and I'm sure the other bus drivers and monitors also appreciate, the holiday pay for Thanksgiving. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Ms. Samantha Womack.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Greetings to Dr., is it Patillo or Patillo? Patillo Chairman, Dr. Bracy Superintendent, and all of the Portsmouth Public School School Board of Level Leadership and all the staff at Portsmouth Public Schools. I am Mrs. Samantha Womack, Health Services Supervisor, speaking on behalf of all school nurses and Health Services. So with my presentation, I'm just gonna, it just hit on a few bold areas here. So I just want, I just want to start, sorry, my voice is a little hoarse. I just want to start off by saying, when I, you know, became a part of Portsmouth Public School, it was a lot, a lot of the work that needed to be done, a lot of hours that had to be put out, and I had, you know, a bunch of my nurses, you know, to the point of burnout and even to the point of, you know, feeling like no one cared about them, whereas at the point, morale has improved, you know, greatly, I will definitely say that. So with that, so with that said, one definite area of concern is the discrepancy in the, in our LPN pay as well as the RN pay. So just to kind of keep it in layman's terms with you all, for registered nurse versus LPN, they're both nurses. I just want to put that forward, is they're both nurses, licensed nurses in Virginia. However, for the registered nurse, it does require additional education as well as additional responsibility, such as with, with our RNs, we have to sign those care plans. We also have, also have to sign immunization records, which was a recent update from Virginia Department of Health two years ago, and then also the medical designee training that has to be conducted by an RN. And in our schools, 22 of our schools, only, only seven RNs. The rest we have are LPNs, which, you know, I'm blessed, we're blessed to have, you know, you know, at least a nurse at every school, but, you know, my argument is, or actually my case is, is that that's increased demands that being placed on our RNs, and they need to be compensated fairly. The other, the other point I want to bring up as well is the, is also to the, the pay difference with our, with our team lead. When I did my calculations, it was about, let's see, approximately 6,100 below what our surrounding school systems are paying team lead, nurse team lead, and for those of you who don't know, our nurse team lead, she's my right-hand woman, or if we did have a male nurse, right-hand man. So, you know, they're overseeing, overseeing, you know, all the schools as well, and, you know, God forget, God forbid I get hit by a bus, they have to step in and, you know, resume my role. So we need, we need to make, need to make sure we're taking care of our team leader and compensating him or her fairly as well. And also, also I'll bring up hazard pay, hazard pay as well. While we stated earlier that essential workers, you know, in Hampton Roads got hazard pay, our nurses did not get hazard pay, and, you know, our nurses, they're, you know, we have students coming in to the clinic, they could be, you know, positive for COVID, we don't know. We, you know, go ahead and treat them and try to do what is in the best interest of them. And also, and the thing is, is that, you know, we, you know, our nurses, we want the, you know, everybody feel like that they're matter, you know, and the other thing I'll bring up, bring up too, is that with education, continued education for our nurses, such as, you know, being able to afford them the opportunity to get continued education, human trafficking, as well as behavioral emergencies, autism spectrum, these are real, you know, concerns, you know, and these are special situations that require, you know, a, you know, delicate approach when, you know, you're dealing with these type of students in the office, you know, to be, you know, as a nurse, to be able to pick up on, you know, subtle clues that, okay, this, you know, student comes to the office, could be possibly, you know, victim of human trafficking, just by picking up subtle clues. And then the, the other point I'll bring up as well is there's new legislation that'll be coming out, actually will be effective of January 2022, which will, which will be the undesignated stock of ibutromal inhalers. While the state is providing some funding, that funding is going to run out, and the biggest, the biggest, you know, goal behind, you know, having the undesignated stock of ibutromal inhalers in the school is to make sure that we don't lose any more kids due to asthma, because, just let you all know, most children die from respiratory or lung-related emergencies, not heart attacks like, you know, older adults. So we want to make, want to make sure, make sure that, you know, we, you know, do our, do our best, you know, to keep from losing a child, because after all, these parents are, you know, trusting us with their, you know, their heart, their, you know, their prized possessions, their precious, you know, children, so we want to make sure that, you know, we are prepared to do what is in the best interest and not, you know, betray the trust of these parents. And then, and then also the other thing too, with having the undesignated stock of ibutromal inhalers, also to ensure that the students can go back to class and they're not having, you know, be sent to the hospital, et cetera, et cetera, cut down on, you know, hospitalization. And I believe that is it, unless you all had any questions, concerns, or comments.
No, ma'am, I do see the, the request that you place in Board Docs, and we will be looking at these things during the budget process, and I have recognized a lot of these are just one-time calls and some are continuous, so we'll keep those in mind as well, but thank you so much for coming on tonight.
You're welcome. If you all have any questions, you know, definitely, you know, don't be afraid to reach out, email me, call me. If there's anybody from Health Services here, go ahead and stand up. If not, I'll represent the whole department.
Stand if you got to stand alone. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all. Take care.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hines.
Thank you, and I'm going to share with you so I don't have to bumble on Ms. Chamberlain the whole time. Yes, one question, and you have in your request, uniform.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know if it's for you or if it's for Dr. Bracy on the board. Are your uniforms ones that you all take home and wash, or are they ones like we trade in and trade out?
They'll be the ones that we wash.
Okay, so we're talking scrubs?
Scrubs, yes.
Okay.
Scrubs, scrubs, or, let's see, or, you know, a tee-shirt that'll, you know, make sure we have clean, you know, uniforms during this pandemic.
Absolutely.
Sorry, sorry, you all, that sound horrible.
No, you're, I'm, I'm right there with you. I, I understand, so, and the, and the clean clothes thing, I get as a classroom teacher, nothing is worn twice, everything goes in the wash, and so I understand. So I just wanted to, when said uniforms on here, I was just wondering, wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Gordon Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Jones.
Good evening. Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, members of the School Board, members of Portsmouth Public Schools, and guests, good evening. My name is Gordon Jones. I am a 1981 graduate of Manor High School. So I thank you for bringing Manor back. And I'm a 30-plus employee with Portsmouth Public Schools. And I'm coming to you this evening as President of Portsmouth Education Association. I do believe you all have the presentation in your board docs. My Board of Directors, Ms. Babita Terry, Vice President, Juanita Jones Secretary, Marie Weber Treasurer, Laurel Hamilton, our Elementary Representative at Large, Rhonda Stewart, Middle School Representative at Large, Davine Walker, High School Representative at Large, Katie Vincent, Special Centers at Large, and we also left off Ms. Frenchy Copeland, who is our instructional assist, I mean, instructional assistance representative. And I'd like to present to you this evening, for those who do not know, Dr. Tony L. McNair, who is our Uniserve Director.
How you doing, Dr. McNair?
On behalf of the Board of Directors and the over 550 members of the Portsmouth Education Association, along with every staff member and every student of Portsmouth Public Schools, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to present to you our recommendations for, and I excuse me for making the wrong note, the 2021-2022 school year budget. Let us first take a moment to say congratulations to our Superintendent, Dr. Eli Bracy, for being elected President-elect of the National Superintendent's Association, what an outstanding honor for an outstanding man. And to this dedicated Assembly of People who work to ensure our school system continues to provide the best quality education for our students and equality of life for the working staff of Portsmouth Public Schools, we thank you for your hard work and dedication to your elected position. We know that Portsmouth School District has some of the most talented and hard-working employees bar none. This was proven during the 2020-2021 time span, when schools were closed and teachers had to instruct our students virtually. Throughout this ordeal, Portsmouth educators, staff, students, and parents continued to shine bright together. But the pandemic did present its problems. For example, school bus drivers are doing their best to make sure Portsmouth children are getting back and forth to school safely and in a timely manner, although our district is short of drivers. I would like to ask the school board, school bus drivers to stand at this time. Thank you. Our cafeteria workers make sure our students receive nutritious meals daily, and our custo, custodial staff works hard to maintain clean and sanitized buildings. Most of these essential personnel are overworked, underpaid, and receive little or no recognition for their efforts. We have to change this scenario. Then there are the teacher assistants and other educational support personnel, such as secretaries and nurses, who go above and beyond their schools, for their schools in many instances. They're appalled to hold classes, ensure offices are being run efficiently, and taking care of our children when ill, yet are not being paid for their talents. By the way, Portsmouth could replenish this enormous teacher shortage by offering continuing education incentives to allow support personnel to go to school to get their desired degrees. However, let it be known that many of our school employees cannot afford the basic needs of care for themselves or their families because they make, they are making below the living wage, an income that allows them to enjoy a quality of life where they are not dependent on the assistance of others. And because of the pandemic, our students have fallen behind academically, which makes it even harder for teachers to bring them to where they should be. A teacher's nights are still filled with continuous planning and evaluating assessment data that impedes on enjoying their families and, and/or any leisure time at all. Staff shortage, additional daily assignments, abundance of professional developments, long, tedious lesson planning, no substitutes, no planning time, no restroom breaks, mandatory staff quarantines, all equal burnt-out frustrated staff. It is no secret that funding for our school district comes from what is allocated from not only the federal government, but the state and the city as well. So the question is, are these funds being used to ensure the personnel of the school system is being properly paid for what they're enduring, especially within this COVID season, which is still upon us? We are confident that the school division and the school board can collaborate together to ensure that our staff, students, and parents are all shining brighter together for the best district in the region. This can be achieved through providing a 4% increase for pay for all employees. Each of the working, employee work groups have worked above and beyond to make sure we are providing the best possible service to our students with all the negatives and deficits we have faced. We would, we want this increase at one time. I'm, I need to repeat that. We want this increase at one time and not spread over years as increases have been in the past. We need and deserve this increase. This is not the time to spend money on new textbooks or new programs. We need to take the money and invest in our students, providing much-needed resources such as technology and tutorial services for both school and home that will help bring them at or at least near grade level and offer help beyond the school day. We also need to provide more funding to, to expand our extracurricular and after-school programs to keep our students actively engaged in something positive and safe. These activities not only channel into our students' creative thinking skills, but help to build their character and temperament to becoming responsible and productive citizens. Our students and staff, thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns and recommendations with you. We look forward to seeing the implementation of these ideas and more in order to make, to make Portsmouth Public Schools not only the ideal place for teaching and learning, but to also continue shining brighter together as a model for other districts. And I'd like to add with this, a little scenario. Dr. Bracy and Dr. McNair, along with Ms. Durin and I, met on Monday at 1:00. We had some concerns coming from the membership of Portsmouth Education Association. We had a wonderful meeting. I love our collaboration. We are able to come together, talk it out, and try to find solutions to issues. It floored me Tuesday night at 5:01, when I received an email for the holiday week for Thanksgiving. I got bombarded with phone calls. And I told each and every one of those persons, make sure you send an email to Dr. Bracy to thank him. And I'm thanking you also, board, for deciding to do something wonderful for the staff. It is much needed, and we are very grateful for it. And that just shows that the collaboration that we could have between Portsmouth Education Association, the school board, and the school system can come up with wonderful things if we all just work together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. And as always, I want to thank the PEA for continuing to make, keep us aware of your needs and concerns. There's not a budget season that goes past. I want to hear from Ms. Juanita, or Ms. Katie, and they'll approach me in person as well. So we do appreciate you, and we appreciate the work that you do and the collaborative effort you, you all put together to make sure the needs of our staff are met. And thank you so much for coming to get on this evening. Thank you. And I, I would also like to say to everyone who, some have left that have presented on tonight, that the board, we were taking these concerns very seriously. We've actually been working on a lot of these things already as a board and a staff. Some things are already in the works that we're trying to meet those needs. I will say this, that as a board and, and myself personally, many of us grew up in Portsmouth Public Schools. There've, there have been employees that have played very important roles in my life all throughout my school experience, from Mr. Credo, who was my food services person at Lakeview, to Ms. Walensky, who was my bus driver for half of my life, my uncle, who retired as a custodian in Portsmouth Public Schools. And we realize that the things you do are needed, they're pertinent, and we cannot thrive to see without you. We do realize that. We know that, it's been a long time since a lot of things have been fulfilled, and there've been a lot of promises made, some haven't been kept. But we collaboratively, as a board, we appreciate you. We realize how you have carried this school division through a pandemic. You're continuing to carry us now. And, you know, my favorite book says that, no, you've been faithful over a few things. So when we come back budget season, we may not meet every need, but we won't come back empty-handed. We will promise you that. So thank you all for coming, and you all have our sincerest gratitude and heartfelt thanks for everything you do for Portsmouth Public Schools every single day. And thank you again for coming on this evening. Agenda item 8.1 is an expulsion discipline case number 2021-22/01. The recommendation is expulsion, and I will entertain a motion at this time. Second. Motion made by Board Member Hines, second, by Board Member Tillage. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
I will abstain from that vote.
Six, six yes, one abstention, it passes.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 8.2 expulsion discipline case number 2021-22/02. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Boo for approval?
Second. Motion made by Board Member Hines, second, by Board Member Schumake. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Is it unanimous?
Thank you so much. Agenda item 9.1, the monthly report from the Superintendent, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo and board members. As always, I appreciate the opportunity to speak from the days each month and share some insights with our community. I want to begin tonight with going into some further context for the decision we made this week to make some changes to our school calendar. As you know, we've altered our, our year to extend our Thanksgiving break and add five asynchronous instructional days and classify our two remaining teacher workdays as telework days for all employees. I want to first, I want to first acknowledge that any change to a school calendar creates disruptions for our families who've already made plans based on the original dates we have shared and communicated. Certainly, however, having this number of changes does create some logical issues for families, and I want our community to know that we recognize and we apologize for any inconvenience that these calendar updates may cause. That said, what became abundantly clear over the past few days and weeks was that our students, our teachers, and our families were reaching a breaking point. The mitigation procedures, the quarantines, the class coverage, the contact tracing, and the overall constant state of diligence was impacting the mental and physical health of our division, not just teachers, not just students, not just administrators, not just parents, the entire division. We have heard from you all, and we wanted to put in solutions that could address these concerns and allow our division the time and opportunity to address these stresses appropriately. To our parents who have been critical of this decision, I want you to know that I hear you. We are working with our Department of Curriculum and Instruction, as well as our administrators, to ensure these added asynchronous days are rigorous and engaging as possible for students, that we have supports and resources in place to help students navigate these added days. It is my hope that these breaks and additional days at home will provide everyone the opportunity to decompress, to rest, to be able to tackle and work back to school and continue this year from a strong and healthy place. Before I close out, I do want to end with a couple of calendar reminders. All of our schools and administrative offices will be closed next Thursday, November 11, in observance of Veterans Day. We want to thank all the men and women who have served in the military for their service to this country, and I hope everyone finds a way to show their appreciation in some way next week. And as mentioned before, we have an asynchronous instructional day on Monday, November 22, where all schools and administrative offices will be closed so staff members can telework. Then on Tuesday, November 23 through Friday, November 26, we will continue to be closed for an extended Thanksgiving break. Thank you, Chairman Patillo. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bracy. I'll roll right into Board Member comments, agenda item 9.2. Do we have any Board Member comments on this evening? Ms. Thomas?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo what I think I've heard a lot of the previous speaker said to Dr. Bracy. Thank you again for just hearing the concerns of our staff, our, just our school district as a whole, and putting on the mental health of everyone at the forefront. I know, you know, it's difficult to kind of arrange that, so thank you, thank you, thank you so, so much, and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And I know I'm getting the credit, but it was a collaborative approach. Each team member of the senior staff played an integral part in that was making this decision, from looking at the calendar, the number of hours, and the communication and all of that that goes out. So I'd share the credit with them.
Thanks so much, Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to report out that the Curriculum and Instruction Meeting, Subcommittee Meeting, Subcommittee Committee had a meeting this week. I'm sorry, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a long day, but we did have a meeting this week. And the main discussion was the fact that our K-5 students that are doing virtual will be moved off of Edgenuity and moved into Virtual Virginia, simply for the fact that Edgenuity does not have any live teachers. And our K-5 children, students, were really missing that live interaction. So we will be moving K-5 virtual students from Edgenuity onto Virtual Virginia for the remainder of the year. So, yes, Ms. Thomas?
So has space opened up on Virtual Virginia? Is that only an option for the K-5 students or any?
The discussion was the ones that are right, that are on Edgenuity right now will be moved. So it, it, they didn't say can be or maybe, it was will be. So.
Only for K-5?
For, for K-5.
So any other parent that's currently on, their student might be on Edgenuity, they don't have the option yet to move to Virginia K-12? If it's?
That wasn't, that wasn't discussed.
A discussion, okay.
That can be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, but we made a blanket decision for K-5 students. If there are other students who are not succeeding with Edgenuity, we are open to moving them to Virtual Virginia. And the Virtual Virginia process is open now until December 15. So they are taking new students until December 15, and counselors are reaching out, will be reaching out to get that information to parents and to schools. But we are encouraging our K-5 students to stay, to go with Virtual Virginia if they want to be virtual.
Okay.
Students who are not succeeding in virtual will be moved to in-person learning. And if a student who is in in-person learning is not succeeding or not showing progress or achievement in in-person learning, we will not be moving them to virtual learning.
Okay. Thank you, Doctor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any more Board Member comments or concerns? Vice Chair Atkinson?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to give a shout out to the Portsmouth Bruins 10U football team. Some of those are our students. They actually won the Virginia State Regional Championship, and they're actually fundraising to get to Florida to play in the 10U Super Bowl. They're currently having a fundraiser. If you search Portsmouth Bruins, you will be able to assist them with that. But I just wanted to say congratulations to the coach and the team. Also, I'm not sure if some of the parents seeing the, the blast that was sent out that we're celebrating Military Family Appreciation Month by having a free produce drive-through market for families November 18 at Emily Spahn from 4:30 to 5:00 p.m. So, and again, any of our families and, and military, please feel free to come out. And again, we're not going to be here, so thank you for your service. Happy holidays, have a safe Thanksgiving. I think this is, this is our only meeting this month, right? All right? So happy holidays to everyone.
Board Member Tillage?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you Chair. Um, first I would, um, like to congratulate the Marching Truckers who placed first place, um, in the percussion and also first place in the overall band competition that was held this past week at, um, in Lakeland. And their dancers came in third place. So, um, I know we have a lot of Greyhounds in here, you know. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta hold it down for the truckers just for a little bit.
Well, we'll, we'll let you have one every ten years.
You still gotta leave early.
And, um, also I just want to thank all of our staff, um, who devote so much time to our, to your profession, to our school division. Uh, we definitely could not do, running a successful school division without our support staff, our bus drivers, our janitors, our custodians, cafeteria workers, um, office support staff, our teachers, our principals. Uh, we just thank you every day for what you all do. Uh, we're definitely living in a time right now that is unprecedented. And so, you know, everything that we're dealing with is something that, um, is new to everyone, including you all, including us. And so we just ask you to, to continue to bear with us. And as, as Chairman, uh, Patillo mentioned, you know, nothing's going unheard. And so we just thank you for all that you all do. Um, and then, um, also, is it possible, um, if it's the will of the board, um, if we can get an update, um, on the, uh, presentation, well, the, um, proposal that, uh, Sheriff had sent to us, uh, for the school safety at the next meeting? That concludes my.
Dr. Whitaker.
Just a quick question. Um, will we be offering the booster shot clinic as we did for the, um, the vaccines previously?
We have had discussion, uh, with the Health Department, um, in regards to that. Staffing is a, is a problem for them to be able to conduct it as they did before. But we have been working with them to try to establish some designations within our school divisions. Maybe certain schools with designated times where employees could go by and receive the vaccination. So, yeah, we're in the process of coordinating that now.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Thomas and then Ms. Schumake.
Um, yes, two, two separate comments. First to follow up on Dr. Whitaker's question. It reminded me, um, Dr. Bracy, for the in-school COVID testing through the Vista Grant, is that still target date to be available December 6th? Like those tests in our school? Okay.
Yes, that's, that's still on target. We're, we're just trying to still get information from, from the State Department in regards to the.
Okay.
Concerning our vendor.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, I forgot to mention, we did, um, also have a Budget Finance Committee meeting. Most of what was discussed was the preparation, um, to actually listen to the employee groups that spoke today, um, about their budget, um, concerns. Also, um, like we mentioned before, they're still undergoing audit. I think the audit personnel came on site according to Mr. Falk and, right? And the Impact Aid survey, um, that went out to all the students, they collected those back. Are you still, are we still accepting those if they haven't?
Yes ma'am. We, we will still accept them as long as they will come in. That application is due, um, totally in January, at the end of January. So we accept as many as we come in because each one, each card that is military-connected means money for Portsmouth Public Schools. So yes, if you have not sent it back, please do. Everyone, uh, would have funding if you are military-connected.
Right, right. So, um, Mr. Falk did a great job kind of just explaining, um, the impact to our schools with, with full response of that. And, um, I don't know if we're going to do another blast because parents might not know if they missed that initial weekly date. If we can just let them know they still can turn it in. Um, so that'll be great. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Schumake.
Okay, so yes, we had an HR meeting, uh, this week. And I just really want to thank, uh, Ms. Durin for all of her hard work. I know it's not an easy task to try to recruit and everything else that's going on in the world, um, when it deals with, uh, human resources. So for anyone who is inquiring, um, they are actively, um, looking for teachers. We are not the only locality who are short on staff in general. Um, I know other localities have a lot of issues. Um, some staff is doing double work, and I do mean double work. So, um, I just want to thank everybody, to include the staff, for all of your hard work and for everything that you're doing for Portsmouth Public Schools. Also, um, Churchland Tigers, 12U, is undefeated. So I want to give them a shout out. And they're supposed to be going to Florida as well to play in the championship, um, game. Y'all know I'm not really, um, sports savvy, so don't joke on me. Um, I'm like, am I saying that correctly? Championship game? Okay, great.
We just go.
So, um, if you guys want to donate or help out in any way, please contact Ms. Rosa Williams. She is coordinating this whole trip and this whole fundraising event, um, so that you can, um, contribute as much as possible or whatever you can. So shout out to Churchland Tigers. And again, thank you, Ms. Durin, for everything that you are doing.
Thank you. Uh, as we get ready to close out, I just want to make, uh, make one clarified statement that, uh, we do have the extended Thanksgiving break, uh, which will now be, uh, the building will be closed Monday, uh, through Friday. Although we did make these changes, uh, to the calendar, Dr. Bracy did instruct staff, uh, Mr. Falk with payroll and Ms. Durin, so those hourly employees, you still will receive your pay for that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, although, although we changed the schedule, we're now closed. So I just wanted to make sure we reiterate that, uh, 'cause I have a few, um, messages from staff and one has known me since I was a little boy and she threatened to beat me if I didn't clarify that. So I just want to make sure that I, I put that out there. But if we are all, uh, clear with our comments and concerns, we would now consider this meeting adjourned. Thank you so much. Good night.